Good afternoon, everybody. I'll just start off by requesting everyone's patience. This is my first time chairing, so I'm being mentored here. Welcome to the September 12th meeting of the Municipality of Anchorage zoning board of Examiners and Appeals. I'd like to start with a roll call, please. Mr. Vig.
Here.
Mr. Cars.
Here.
Mr. Ron. Mr. Patrick. Ms. Vlade.
Here.
Ms. Iker.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Ms. Dole.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next item is the minutes from Thursday, August 8th, 2013. Are there any disclosures? All right, I have a motion to approve by Dean Cars and seconded by Timothy Vig. If there's no objections, will the meeting minutes have passed?
Madam Chair, sorry. I actually wasn't present at the meeting of August 8th and was actually hoping to abstain from the approval of those minutes.
You don't have to have been present at that meeting to approve the minutes. It's the resolution that you cannot approve. Thank you.
Okay, item C, Special Order of Business Executive Sessions. And I would take any disclosures, please. Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was not present at the August 8th, 2013 meeting. Will abstain from voting on Resolution 2013-010.
Are there any other disclosures? If not, we'll proceed to item D, the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Cars has moved to approve the consent agenda with seconded by Ms. Dole. Would you like to pull that for any reason? No objection? Seeing nothing else, we'll move to item H, the public hearings. We have one case this evening. Case number is 2013-125. The petitioner is Kyle Gruis. And I'll just read the testimony of persons appearing before the Board shall be limited as follows. The petitioner shall have 10 minutes. Representatives of any groups will have five minutes for discussion and individuals will have three minutes. The petitioner may reserve time for rebuttal at the end of the public hearing. The Board may extend the time period for any reason it deems where additional testimony is necessary to its decision on the case. All right, in the case of 2013-125, I'd like to request a staff presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Erica McConnell. I'm from the current planning section, and I'm presenting this on behalf of Sharon Ferguson, the planner on the case who is out of the office at the moment. On August 21st of this year, 47 public hearing notices were mailed with regard to this case. At the time the case, the staff report was written, four comments were returned, one comment having no objection, and three others expressing some objections. This case is regarding a variance request on a lot on the hillside that is south of Huffman Road and east of Birch Road. It's, the lot is zoned R6 and is owned by Mr. Gruis, the petitioner. He's requesting a variance from the setbacks to allow a garage shop building to encroach 20 feet into the required 50-foot front setback. The lot is generally level but is encumbered with Class B wetlands, mostly in the northern portion of the lot. There currently is a principal structure on the lot which does encroach 26, approximately 26 feet into the front setback but has non-conforming rights. The proposed location of the garage shop building where it, where this variance to be approved would be approximately 20 feet into the front setback and thus approximately 30 feet from the front property line. The recommendation of the department is that this case be postponed pending a jurisdictional determination by the Corps of Engineers, who is responsible for wetlands, jurisdictional determinations. If you would refer to page 11 of your case packet, you will see that the municipal wetlands GIS layer does show that it seems likely that the edge of the Class B wetlands is farther north than the actual boundary on the GIS layer, and thus it's quite possible that there is a conforming location for the petitioner to build this garage shop that neither encroaches into the front setback nor into the Class B wetlands. So at this time, we are unable to determine whether all of the variance standards could be substantially met due to needing a confirmation of the exact wetland boundaries. So the staff recommendation is to continue the public hearing to another meeting after such time as the jurisdictional determination is completed. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the Board have any questions of staff? Mr. Cars.
Thank you. I was having technical difficulties but I was requesting to speak. Ms. McConnell, procedurally, we're, we typically hear a staff presentation on all seven standards and then, then open it up for the petitioner's presentation, and then after that, open it up for public hearing. I heard you speak to the request to postpone, but procedurally, I'm not sure if we can then proceed with, we haven't heard a complete staff presentation on all of the standards. And then, we have, it looks like we have the petitioner and people wishing to speak this evening. Would you recommend we postpone at this point, or should we hear the balance of the staff presentation so that we can then open it up for the petitioner's presentation and then the public testimony? I hope that was clear, although lengthy question.
Through the Chair, Mr. Cars, thank you. I apologize for, you know, I don't have a lot of experience making these sorts of staff presentations, so I was unaware that perhaps all seven standards would be expected. I would, what I would propose is that the seven standards be pushed, or discussion of the seven standards be pushed until the jurisdictional determination is completed. But because the public hearing was advertised for this evening and there appear to be people who have come here to wish to testify, that's why I would recommend that you hear from the petitioner, hear from the public, keep the public hearing open, but postpone until a later meeting date at which time the staff could address the standards in a more complete manner once additional information is received. That, I think, maybe is a little unusual, and if you'd like me to walk through the standards, I certainly will. But I feel like when we have additional information, we'll be able to give you a more complete evaluation of the standards.
I have a question. Could you please address the burden of the petitioner to establish that the standards are met in the event that, it would be helpful to me to keep in mind?
I do believe that the burden of proof to establish that the variance is needed does lie with the petitioner, and thus it's the petitioner's responsibility to get the jurisdictional determination, determine the wetland boundaries. You know, the petitioner's application does, you know, state that there are wetlands on the property and, and he's looking to not encroach into those wetlands, but the exact need for the variance has not yet been established. Through the Chair, Ms. Deal. Anchorage Municipal Code, Section 2115-010C, which is Standards for Variants, states, "A request for variance may be initiated only by the property owner or authorized representative. The application must state with particularity the relief sought and must specify the facts or circumstances that are alleged to show that the application substantially meets the following standards," and then the seven, seven variance standards are listed.
Is there anyone else who'd like to ask questions of staff? Mr. Cars.
She, assuming, I had requested to speak, but Mr. Vig, she made eye contact with you, so.
Well, I'm, I'm not so sure that it's a question for staff, as maybe Mr. Cars and your years of experience on this Board, but we have a prescribed sequence that we follow. We hear the staff's presentation. We then hear, we have an opportunity to ask questions on the staff's interpretation of the seven standards. The petitioner makes their presentation, and there's questioning, and then rebuttal and back and forth. And I'm not sure that, as much as I would, would like to hear from the people who have taken time out of their day to come down here tonight, I'm not sure that rearranging the order of business and having the petitioner's case heard without the staff's and taking public testimony is, is proper. And I would like you to render your, your thoughts on that. If you would, Mr. Cars.
Yeah, Ms. Vlade.
Yeah, no, go ahead, Mr. Cars, sorry.
And that was what I'd requested to, or that, my request to speak. I appreciate Ms. McConnell's, we're attempting to, attempting to accommodate the people that are here this evening. However, we are a quasi-judicial Board, and there is a certain policy that we open up the public hearing after the staff presentation and the petitioner's presentation has been made. So while we may be trying to accommodate people that are here this evening, I'm a little uncomfortable with changing the procedure without having a complete staff presentation. We, you know, we have, as a, in the past, as a courtesy to the petitioner, explained the situation that, you know, right now, we don't have a complete staff presentation. The burden of proof, you know, does rest with the applicant. Staff isn't comfortable with the information that's been provided in rendering a decision. So, you know, it would be my recommendation that we, we do make, and I'd be comfortable making a motion to postpone this pending determination from the Corps, as requested by, by staff. Be interested in discussing it further, but that would be my recommendation that we postpone this and not open the public hearing, since we haven't heard the complete staff presentation yet.
Is there any other discussion? Mr. Vig.
I would, I would second a motion on that nature. Mr. Cars, if you were to make one.
Yes, I would move that we postpone this pending determination from the Corps, and then bring this back for a full hearing, staff presentation and petitioner's presentation as well. And then after that, we'd open it up for public hearing.
Ms. Dole.
Have, I'm, I'm not sure, has, are we speaking to that? Is that motion pending?
It's been, oh, sorry.
The motion has been made.
Oh, okay. I would vote against postponement. I, while I think it's very helpful to have the recommendation of the staff as to whether the standards are met, I think we have some discussion of that in our packets, and I don't know that it would be, I, I'm just not sure it would be proper for us to postpone without a request from the applicant. I would certainly be interested to know the applicant's, if the staff has any, had any indication from the applicant as to that, and also as to whether there's been an application for a wetlands determination.
Ms. McConnell, can you address that?
Through the Chair, Ms. Dole. The applicant is, is, has concurred with the postponement request and, I believe, has an appointment tomorrow with the Corps to come and, to the site and examine the wetlands.
Thank you. Okay, given that information, we have a motion to postpone until next month, well, or until the next scheduled meeting. Do we have anyone to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Mr. Hart, thank you. Actually, Mr. Vig, I'm sorry. Any objection? Any addition, additional discussion? Who'd like to vote? No? Mr. Cars.
I, I just, Ms. Dole, based on that information of you changed your opinion, sounds like you were leaning towards not supporting the motion, but like to discuss the information that staff presented. It sounds like we have a meeting scheduled, or there's a meeting scheduled for tomorrow. My, again, my, my concern is we haven't heard a, a complete staff presentation. So if we move forward with that, we'll have heard, once, you know, we do have the, what's been written, presented to us by the staff, but we have not heard a formal presentation by them. That would be my comment, I guess. So I will be supporting the motion to postpone.
I, that was very helpful, and I, I think I could support the, the motion at this point in time, but would ask that we consider at least requesting an update so that we don't, so that we're in a situation where we know if the, I guess, the applicant is ready, or when the applicant may be ready to move forward or request to move forward with a public hearing, so that it doesn't somehow get dropped for a long time.
Thank you, Ms. Dole. Mr. Hart, did you, I'm having some technical difficulties up here. Did you want to speak?
Yes, Madam Chair. I was simply going to state that, given that's, findings 1, 2, 3, and 7 in the staff packet are kind of based on the, the Corps, sorry, the Corps determination, I think it would be appropriate to postpone, and I'll be supporting the motion, supporting the motion.
I'd like to thank the petitioner for coming out and anyone else who may, may have come out to address this case. Apologize for the uncertainty around how we, how we need to handle this one, but it looks like there's some additional homework that needs to be completed, and the Board will have a much better opportunity to review the case in full once we have that information. So thank you for your time, and we'll see you again. All right. Yeah, nothing like starting out with one that's atypical. Great. Thanks, Dean. Appreciate it.
Thank Dunham.
Yeah, uh-huh. So, is there any other items for discussion? Mr. Cars.
Well done, but I believe, or I'm not sure when we'll need to elect a new Chair. As Vice Chair, you did a wonderful job. You were, you're taking the place of Mr. Dunham, and I'd assume it's appropriate to, to elect a Chair and a new Vice Chair. I don't know the history on Mr. Dunham leaving, but I'm assuming the cryptic email indicated he was, he was gone permanently?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So I'd, I'd be totally supportive of Ms. Vlade becoming the, the permanent Chair, and I think it's only appropriate that we elect a Vice Chair of one of the people that's not here, and it'll serve him right for not being here. Mr. Ron would do a wonderful job. Yes, I, I agree, Ms. Iker.
Well, and did we want to do this today, or do we want to do it next session?
Well, I guess it, I'm open for discussion, but now is as good a time as any, or if you want to practice your, your speech, Ms. Vlade, till next month?
Yeah, no, and I'm fine either way. I'll just need a little bit of time to, to get into the groove here, but I'm happy to, to take that on. That's fine. I would, I would nominate Mr. Cars as Vice Chair, but.
And I, I'm comfortable with that as well, but I'm also not, I don't have any political aspirations beyond this, so I'm comfortable if anybody else would be interested in, in that position as well.
Mr. Hart.
If Mr. Cars willing to make a motion, I'd be willing to second it to nominate you as Chair.
So moved. Are we talking about this this evening, or, Ms. Vlade, would you be more comfortable digesting things till next session as well?
No, no, that's, that's, that's fine with me. It is, I, I was hoping someone else was going to cover today until I got trained up, but that's okay. No worries. So is, is that appropriate that we vote on? Ms. McConnell, can they vote on Chair then? Can I?
Sure. You can, you can rearrange yourself at any time.
Okay, so hearing that, I guess, the motion by Mr. Cars to elect Ms. Vlade as Chair, and did I hear Mr. Ron as second? Or Vice Chair, I'm sorry?
Mr. Hart was the second.
Yes, and Mr. Hart was second, but Mr. Vig as, well, let's do it one at a time. So the motion to approve Ms. Vlade as Chair, if we can vote, please? Dean?
I did put in a motion just to get things moving, just on the computer screen.
I'm just having some, some, things are not aligning.
Oh, I'm happy to withdraw.
No, that's, that's fine. You know, I'm just trying, I'm trying to make sense here because this is not matching what's going on in the room, so.
I only thought somebody had to do something on the computer to maybe.
Okay. So approved. Ms. Vlade will be the newly appointed Chair. Secondly, we'd like to, I guess there hasn't been a motion. I'd like to hear a motion for Vice Chair.
And, Mr. Vig's got a motion. And, Mr. Vig's got a motion. And I was joking, we, about electing someone that's not here. I'm comfortable with anyone here as Vice Chair personally.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve. Mr. Vig?
I'd like to make a motion to elect Mr. Cars as Vice Chair.
Mr. Hart?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Actually, I guess I should ask, are there any other nominations? All right, let's vote. Motion to approve Mr. Vig, or Mr. Cars as Vice Chair. And that motion passes. Are there any other items for discussion? Hearing none, we'll adjourn today's meeting. I need a motion to adjourn today's meeting, please.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. Sorry, I didn't get my button pressed fast enough and I probably missed the appropriate opportunity to do this, but I should let you know that the corporate leasing variance that you heard back in, I think it was July, has been appealed to Superior Court. The legal department takes the lead when these sorts of things are appealed, but I'm just letting you know and I'll keep you informed of what happens.
Thank you, Ms. McConnell. Are there any other discussion items? Mr. Vig?
I had a question maybe for staff or if you could find out, but I, I believe that my term and Mr. Ron's may be coming up soon? Is that not my year off?
Through the Chair, Mr. Vig. Anyone whose term is up, terms are always up in October and anyone whose term is up this year has already been notified.
Okay.
So we'll, if, we tell people maybe two or three months before their term is up and ask them if they would like to be reappointed, so if you didn't hear from me, your term's not up.
Okay. Wasn't wishing for it or anything, I was just curious. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Ms. Dole?
I just wondered if we could say, thank Mr. Dunham for his years of service publicly or if there was something else we could do for, to thank him for his service on the Board.
Mr. Cars?
Ms. Law, if, normally he would have let us know before and he would have taken us out for drinks and that's how we would have thanked him, stick him with the bill, but I echo your, your...
And invite him back.
Your thanks of, for Mr. Dunham serving on the Board.
Absolutely. Anyone else? All right, a motion to adjourn? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.